Good evening. Welcome to the regularly scheduled Town Council Meeting of April 7, 2014. Deputy Mayor, if you could lead us in the place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dolores?
Counselor Hammond.
Here.
Counselor Hurley is unable to attend tonight. Counselor Kotkin?
Here.
Counselor Manusos?
Here.
Counselor Martino?
Here.
Counselor Ralph?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montanari.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dolores. We start this evening with a proclamation for Public Health Week, and we have some representatives from our Central Connecticut Health District who could come up, like to present this.
Yeah, go out to the podium.
Can you see it? So, this official proclamation to you. Thank you for coming, by the way. Whereas the American Public Health Association has proclaimed April 7 through April 13, 2014, as National Public Health Week, and whereas this year's theme is "Public Health Starts Here," and focuses on the role of public health and prevention in a new world of healthcare delivery, and whereas the public health system that keeps our communities healthy and safe is changing as technologies advance, public attitudes towards health shift and more health and safety options become available through policy changes such as the Affordable Care Act, and whereas National Public Health Week reminds us each year of the fundamental role that our own state and local health departments play every day in the health of our communities, and whereas the town of Weathersfield, together with its neighboring towns of Rocky Hill, Newington, and Glastonbury, receives quality public health service through its regional health department, the Central Connecticut Health District, now in its 17th year of service. Now, therefore, I, Paul Montanari, as mayor of the town of Weathersfield, do hereby proclaim April 7 to April 13, 2014, as National Public Health Week in Weathersfield, Connecticut. I acknowledge all our residents to join me in this celebration and encourage this critical role of public health and prevention and in helping individuals and communities to achieve and maintain good health. Thanks, Diane. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you from the Central Connecticut Health District Board and staff for the proclamation, and to say I hope we can continue to serve the town of Weathersfield and our other towns in the district in our mission to promote and protect the health of our citizens. And just to say, I think you're going to see some changes coming in public health. Affordable Care Act was mentioned here. You're going to see a broadening of public health to become more focused on some chronic health issues rather than inspections and programming. And I think those reflect in our pursuit of accreditation over the next one to two years that we're actively working on, and it'll also be reflected in our search for our new director, which is really just beginning. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to public comments. We have two hearing items this evening. The first is a resolution concerning a grant application to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Anybody in the public wishing to speak on that specific item this evening? Anyone wishing to speak on that item? If not, I'll declare that hearing closed. We have a second hearing item available for public comment, which is the resolution endorsing the Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Performance Incentive Program. Anyone wishing to speak on that item for a public hearing this evening? Anyone wishing to speak on that one item, Capital Regional Council of Governments? Seeing none, I'll declare that closed as well. We'll move on to public comment general. Yes, Mr. Cop.
Hi, Paul Cop, 100 Executive Square. I'd like to thank Counselor Manusos for bringing to the town's attention the lease of the Deming Standish House to the Historical Society during the last council meeting. First, I was personally surprised at the building that houses Lucky Lou's was subleased by the Historical Society to the proprietor and that it was owned by the town. Secondly, I was surprised that the town had leased this town-owned property to the Historical Society for use as a tavern. Third, I was shocked that the lease was for 50 years. Finally, I was shocked that the town needs to spend $500,000 of Weathersfield taxpayer money on the property. Now, that's what I learned from Counselor Manusos during that town council meeting. Then, what I learned from the official recorded minutes of the town council shocked me even further. In my opinion and that of others, this lease is null and void. This lease to the Historical Society was signed by then-town manager Bonnie Theron on September 3, 2008. The town council meeting of September 2nd, the day before, shows no mention of the lease or public authorization by the town council for the town manager to sign it. The records do show that the town council did go into executive session after that public town council meeting. At the next town council meeting held on September 15, there was again no mention of the lease. Many conclusions can be imagined. The town manager, as required, was never authorized in public session to sign the lease, so the lease is null and void. It is also interesting to note that our current mayor, then deputy mayor, and that other members of the council were Martin Walsh, Matthew Forrest, John Cassio, Jerry Roberts, John Council, and a couple of others. It is also interesting that the town lawyer at the time is a recently reappointed and current town attorney. It is also alleged that members of that town council were also members and are officers of the Historical Society, and if accurately, clearly, a conflict of interest. This cannot stand. Weathersfield politics, as usual, must stop. In any case, as motivation for the Historical Society to be its guardian, the lease mentions that the premises are significant in the history, architecture, archaeology, and the culture of the town of Weathersfield. This use, this current use, does not further that purpose today, except to admire it as you pass by. Perhaps the property should be returned to the family that donated it, if they'll accept it. In any case, this should go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cop. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? Yes, Bob.
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. I missed your last meeting, which I understand you had some people commenting on that Standish House issue. And since that point, I've gone back to do some of my research as well into your public minutes. And Mr. Cop sort of highlighted some of the issues that I came up with as well. So, I don't think because of time, I'm going to really go on those issues that he just spoke about. But what I will talk about is, I do have a copy of the lease dated the 3rd of September, 2008, retroed back into September 1st of 2007. I don't know why you retroed it back. In reading the minutes, there was a tremendous amount of work that was put into this, and extremely very few words put into the minutes. And when I say that, this town council has said so few words about this lease. Go to the Planning-Zoning Commission meeting and look at the minutes that they put out as they, you know, because they had to do, what, an 824 on it? So few words. Not a word about the 50-year lease, not a word about the $19,200 that the town would pay the Historic Society if the building remained vacant and couldn't be rented for a restaurant. We, the taxpayers, would pay for that. And I says, what idiot wrote this contract? When you do a contract, there's both have strengths. I don't see the Weathersfield, the Historic Society having much strength at all. I see the town having a tremendous amount of strength in that push-and-pull situation. But when I read this agreement, this lease, only a moron would write this. Only a moron would sign this. I cannot believe, 50-year lease, you're going to pay for their, if they don't rent it for a restaurant, we're going to pay them $19,200 if it goes on for six months. We're going to pay their insurance. We're going to, come on, guys. No wonder we're in trouble. And no wonder our, every year, our taxes keep going up. Same people sitting here negotiate contracts with our labor in this town. If you, this is the proof of how bad our negotiators are in this town. All people have to do is look at this lease. This lease is a disgrace. And any jerk that would sign it is an idiot. Then, on top of it, go into the vision appraisal. Look at the Kinney, whatever, the Kinney Building. Who's the owner of it? Town of Weathersfield. The Old Academy. Who's the owner of it on vision appraisal? Town of Weathersfield. Go to 222 Main Street, the Standish House. Weathersfield Historic Society is on our records as the owner. I'm sure it's not an deed, but in here. How did that happen? I'm going to come down to the manager's office on Friday. Mr. Manager, I'd like to have an explanation on that and see who signed the vouchers.
I wasn't going to be there.
Well, then, I'll come-
I'm just kidding. For you, I'll come in, Bob. Just for you.
I'll come next Friday. I'll come next, I'll come next Friday. I want to see the documentation that authorized the Weathersfield Historic Society's name to be on here, and I want to see who the lawyer's name is and the officials who signed it. I'll be down to see him. But anyway, this, we go back, we go back into the, you know, Mr. Cop talked about some dates and whatnot, and I wrote down some things. September 17, 2007, Counselor Walsh moved to sign a property lease for the Cove Warehouse, the Old Academy, and Kinney Memorial Center with the Society, Historic Society. And then, as time went on, Mr. Walsh is pushing the Standish House lease without any words about any of this stuff. And then, it was signed, dated, I think, the 3rd of September, 2008, without any public display here from our council members. And a number of you people were sitting here at that time. That thing is null and void. It has not, it has not been executed. And because it hasn't been executed, I urge you to go back and find some documents, because I'm going to take this to the Ethics Commission, not here in Weathersfield. Heck, no. I'll take it to Hartford and file a complaint. I've said more than once from this podium, when there's a problem with a citizen, we should have an ombudsman to take care of, or at least listen to the problem and try to resolve it before it goes up to Hartford or goes into, because you know what ethics costs you. You don't have anybody, an ombudsman. You've got nothing but a lease that you've been letting people use that property, and it's not legal. And they've collected money. They owe us money, and you know how I am with money. You gave money away in the past that I belly-ached about, and I'm going to bellyache about this one, too. And we should be, and my going to this Ethics Commission in Hartford, or whatever it is up there, is to get that money back from the Historic Society. They have no legal right to it, and I don't care how they get it back. The town is in bad enough shape. Our sales of our homes continue. Have you seen the message about a month ago where we had 95 sales from the July to September of 2013? Sales of 95 and 23 foreclosures. You know, yet our own government is bad. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mr. Colton.
Good evening. Gasco Antonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. A few meetings ago, I guess, the town manager has said that it's against the law to install a stop sign in the eastbound direction for Morrison Avenue. I would like to know which law is that. I don't know which one, and I don't want to hear about, there is not enough traffic, because Hillcrest Avenue has hefty amount of traffic that we have, one thing. I complained about a year or two ago regarding the intersection of Main Street and Church. And I've been going there, you know, I catch squirrels, and I let them go in the cove, and every time I have to cross Main Street, I have to be in the middle of the, of the, I guess, you know, it's the Southbound Lane, to see the approaching traffic from the south. I mean, it should not be. How long is it going to take before we fix that? Beverly and Walker Hill, a few meetings ago, the town manager again said that as you come out of Beverly, you can only see enough distance for the speed limit to be 25 miles per hour. Well, I appreciated that it came down from 40 to 35, but it's still, it's not safe. And a new location now, as I travel Silas Dean, Southbound, from the beginning, like, you know, leave Hartford and go down, and I come to the intersection, I guess, of Jordan Lane, Silas Dean, and then there is Route 515, Northbound Off-Ramp. And when I'm approaching this intersection, I see a sign which says, "No Right Turn." You know, I've been in engineering for a long time. I mean, you know, does that mean that I cannot turn right on Jordan Lane? Or does it mean that I cannot make a U-turn onto the off-ramp from Route 5 and 15? I think that's what it means. You cannot make a U-turn onto the off-ramp from 5 and 15. But if that is the case, the sign itself says, "No Right." So, I think we should get in touch with the state and see if we can change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak from the public this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to council reports.
Excuse me, I have a letter. Do you want me to tell you about it?
Sure. Go ahead, Dolores.
I received a letter from Robert Gary. He actually emailed it to me. It also concerns the Standish House, and he has, as all of you have it in front of you, four questions that he thinks you should think about when you decide what's going on at the house. He knows that the income generated by renting the Standish House to restaurant operators is not guaranteed income. There have been times in the past where the house has been vacant. If the property were to be sold and that money placed in trust specifically for the benefit of the society, and if the town also committed the value of the property tax and additional funding to guarantees a specific amount to the society, including increases over time, would that not result in a significant reduction in the expense that a town currently occurs while also providing a better and more predictable funding source for the society? You know better than I do for the answers of the above questions, and I ask you to carefully consider them as you weigh the decision you are about to make. Robert Gary.
Thanks, Dolores. Council reports?
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, a couple of things. One is the Library Committee, as I mentioned earlier, they, we're going to have a new library director. There were 31 candidates who applied by the deadline of April 1, and we have a group of current and retired library directors from Central Connecticut who are doing a screening, going through a screening process, and they winnowed that list of 31 down to seven that they will interview and then recommend finalists to the Library Board. So, hopefully, the Library Board will be able to interview them in mid-May, and we'll have a new library director on to replace Laurel, who's retiring, by July 1. Also, on the Insurance Committee, we'll be talking more about this when we go through the budget, but the Insurance Committee was looking at the coverage, basically, that the town has. And remember, this town is self-insured, and we cover all claims essentially out of our own pocket up to $100,000 for each event. When we go over $100,000, and this has been the level for maybe a couple decades, we have another policy that covers, through Anthem Blue Cross, that covers coverage over if somebody has incurred $200,000 because of a serious medical issue, the second $100,000 is covered through this policy. The Insurance Committee looked at, well, what would it, that $100,000 level has been there for a long time. What would happen if we raised that a bit, up to $125,000? How much could we save on the premium? And at the Insurance Committee, the view was the town could reduce the spending on its coverage by $170,000 in the event that we changed that really deductible, I guess, and moved it from 100 to 125,000. And they unanimously, 6-0, recommended that the town go in that direction, so make a change to a deductible that's really been in place for probably 20 years. I think I, I think we've done additional work, Jeff, and it's actually, the savings is north of $200,000 now.
Correct, and I'll talk a little bit about that in the budget presentation.
Okay. Well, I won't steal any more of your fire on that, but it's a good, it's a good, it's a good sign. The Insurance Committee, you know, many of whom, you know, have a lot of experience in the industry, felt that that was a prudent step to take. They also looked at the potential of $150,000, but the incremental savings weren't that great, and they really didn't feel, at least at this stage of the town, should expose themselves to that additional $25,000. So, that's going to, we're going to go through that with the budget. So, that was the main topic that we met on last week. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Tony?
A couple weeks ago, the Weathersfield Advisory Commission for People with Disabilities met at the First Church Village, and Curtain Transportation was there, the people who take your dial-a-right for us. And they sat down with their people and got their comments on what they were looking for. And one of the things that came forward from people there were, they had suggested that service be extended to ShopRite in East Hartford, because a lot of people like to go there, and it was closer to take them there than to Newington, to Price Shopper, which was on the list. So, they've started a survey on that, and people write in the look starting in July to switch to go there. So, if there's anybody out there who uses our dial-a-right service and wants to go to East Hartford, please contact Social Services to get your name on the list for consideration of them doing that. And they also worked with the people on this few other issues they had and solved them. So, Curtain is being very friendly with our residents and helping them with their needs. Also, there was a meeting that same week with the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. They're moving forward on May 19. They're going to have a fair at the community center. There's going to be people there from tourism to go over the various trails in town, wine trails, chocolate trail, antique trails, et cetera, and other vendors are going to be there for other things. So, that would be a good afternoon for any seniors to go down to the community center and see what's there and what's available for them.
Thanks, Tony. Any other council reports? Jerry?
Yes, the Youth Advisory Board met last Thursday night, and although there wasn't a quorum, the work is continuing. On May 1, they will be having a volunteer recognition night. They've invited over 300 of the town's youth to be honored for their service hours they've given to the town. So, the board is working on finalizing that event.
Any other reports? Counselor Comet?
Yeah, I'd just like to ask Dolores if, I know in the interest of time, she kind of cut short the letter that was sent by Mr. Gary, but I was asking, I'd like to ask her if she can read it from the beginning, because there's some important points that I think should be on the record and the public should know.
We're going to put the whole letter on in.
Yeah, I understand that.
That the public will know.
I don't mind reading it if you want. Doesn't matter.
Pardon me?
If you don't want to read, I can read it.
That's fine. "April 7, ladies and gentlemen, I am writing to you regarding the issue of the town's ownership of the Standish House. My intent in writing is to remove some of the emotion, personal or political agendas, and scare tactics from the conversation. As you know, you are elected officials whose job is to represent the best interests of the town of Weathersfield. In evaluating this issue, you must ask yourselves the following questions. One, did the gift of the building by the Standish family include any restrictions on use or sale of the property? If there are no legal obligations to continuing to own the building, any speculation on the intent of the gift is just opinion, as is any belief that selling the building would cause other individuals to reconsider future gifts of property. If an individual wants to donate real property, it is their obligation to specifically stipulate how they wish their gift to be used by the town. Two, should the town be in the business of managing commercial property? Certainly not. To state otherwise is illogical. It is not the role of government to engage in private enterprise. Three, does the town benefit by the expenditure of the significant capital budget in managing the property? No, the town does not. Those funds could be better used managing other town property. Four, does the property benefit the Weathersfield Historical Society? Absolutely, and the town should be committed to supporting the society as an incredibly important part of our town and its rich history. The question here is what is the best way to support the society? We know that the income generated by renting the Standish House to restaurant operators is not guaranteed income. There have been many times in the past where the house has been vacant, the property were sold, to be sold, and the money placed in trust specifically for the benefit of the society, and if the town also committed the value of the property tax and additional funding to guarantee a specific amount to the society, including increases over time, would that not result in significant reduction in the expense that the town currently incurs while also providing better and more predictable funding source for the future, for the society? You know better than I the answers to the above questions. I ask you to carefully consider them as you weigh your decision and as you listen to other public comment on the matter. Please remember that these are important points to consider as you act in our collective best interest. Thank you."
Thanks, Dolores. Good to meet you. Make you repeat some of that, but I'd just like to follow that up. You know, with that, I think this has obviously been an emotional issue for some people, and I think it'd probably be prudent if we could set up a committee of some sort with some of the stakeholders involved to review this and go through it in a methodical, you know, way to determine what the best approach would be. So, I'd like to take charge of that and discuss it with colleagues up here to see how we do that. Thank you.
Comments? Council comments? Nothing? Move on to the town manager. I know he has two items for us this evening.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, going to give a brief overview of the proposed budget that was delivered to you over the weekend. Per the charter, town manager is to distribute the budget to the town council by the first Monday in April, which is this evening. Historically, we've got it to you the Friday before or the, that Monday. So, over the weekend, you've received your budget. Tonight is a very brief presentation. There'll be a more in-depth presentation of the budget at the April 21 public hearing, which will be here at 7:00 PM. And we'll just get started real quick in the interest of time. I'm going to point on the outside here. The top chart, this- The top chart just looks at the spending between the different functions between the current year and next year. As you can see, you heard from the Board of Education last week, or last meeting, that their budget is increasing three-point-seven percent, a dollar increase of one-point-one-nine, one-point-nine million. The town's budget, not including roads, which is about two-hundred-and-six-dollar difference, is increasing one-point-five million, or four-point-three percent. A big piece of that, and you'll see that in a second, is debt service on the new high school. The proposed mill rate is thirty-seven-oh-five for next year, up from thirty-three-oh-sixty-six. A big function of that is reappraisal, which impacted the overall budget or overall grant list in the town. Spending increases for the past ten years, you can see spending from prior year, three-point-nine-seven total spending, proposed increase for the next year compared to the prior years since two-thousand-and-five. Grand list, the grand list at reappraisal reduced five-point-six percent. We had probably the third lowest drop in this, for those towns that reappraised last year. Some were more significant than ours. The average value of a single-family home in Weathersfield is now a hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred dollars, down from a hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand last year on the prior grant list. So overall, about a third of the homes in town will not see any, will either see their taxes stay the same and go down under this, and the remaining two-thirds will see their taxes go up somewhat, depending upon what their value, what happened with their value in the reappraisal. About seventeen percent of commercial properties in Weathersfield will see no tax increase or a tax decrease. The remaining commercial parcels will see an increase depending on what happened with their value. Overall, we had about a hundred-and-forty, a hundred-and-fifty appeals on the value, which isn't, for a reappraisal year, isn't that significant. The BAA did do their finish-up, and the taxable grant list is a two-million-two-oh-five number. A big measure of fiscal health for a community is assigned, unassigned fund balance. You can see we're, we've got a policy that says we're trying to stay between eight and ten percent of general fund expenditures. Next year's proposed amount, at the end of fiscal fifteen, which is next June, not this coming June, but the following June, we're looking at nine-point-eight percent. We're anticipating using three-hundred-thousand dollars of fund balance in this year's budget and another three-hundred next year. That's how the budget's set up. Looking at initial revenue projections for the end of this year, we probably won't use all that based upon other revenues coming in, so this number will probably be greater once we get to audit in the fall. The school project, the capital fund includes an appropriation of eight-point-nine million dollars from state grants for the construction of the high school. As we have talked over the past few months, since Thanksgiving on the high school project and how we'll work our way through this project to a funding of eighty-three million dollars, the state grant we're anticipating to complete the project will be budgeted as an appropriation in the capital fund. So it has no impact on the mill levy. It's a capital appropriation. It's a grant received and a grant expended for the high school project, and that'll show up in the capital fund. Also, as part of the one-point-five-million-dollar increase in total town-side spending, four-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand of that is for debt service on the first series of bonds. What we're looking at below, and if you look at the chart that we put out for the referendum, this line here, these scaly lines or bars, that almost mirrors the same chart we put out for the referendum. Over the next four years, we intend to issue a series of bond issues, twelve million dollars apiece, to pay for the high school project, with a cleanup at the end, depending on what's left over. So these increases per year go from next year of a very small amount to a very large increase in one of the last year's. What we're proposing in this budget is to smooth it out by adding the same amount of money to each budget over the next five years to cover the debt service in the high school project. So it'll be the same amount of money per year, rather than one year, a little bit of money, and then one year, up to nine-hundred-thousand dollars of new money. We're proposing just to add the same amount every year until we get to the necessary debt service at the highest single year of debt service, which is twenty, twenty, what's that say?
Nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen. So that's what's proposed in the town budget. Just some additional highlights in the budget. There's an additional hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in the capital fund for security enhancement at the schools, doors and cameras. The MDC sewer charge to municipalities went up six-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand dollars to Weathersfield. The OPEB trust fund, and per the policy we adopted last year, the town and the school will add two-hundred-thousand dollars total per year into the program. So current year, we add, we put two-hundred-thousand in for OPEB, next year, we'll put four-hundred-thousand dollars in for OPEB, the following year, we'll put six-hundred-thousand into OPEB, and so on. So it's an increase of a hundred-and-twenty-two on the town side and seventy-eight on the board side. The town has a higher level of post-employment retiree benefits than the board does, although opposite in terms of active. Five percent increase in auto liability property insurance. This covers all properties, town and board, and the town picks up that cost. It's in the town budget. As Councilmember Kotkin said a few minutes ago, we're gonna see a slight decrease in health insurance. The claim volume and claim level stayed the same, but the stop-loss premium due to changing the stop-loss pooling point at, to one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand will go down two-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand. Now, the budget you see this evening, the only adjustment for that forty-four, two-forty-four, was fifty-four-thousand-dollar reduction in the general fund. The best number we had at the time allowed us to take fifty-four-thousand out of the general fund for that number. So standing here today, we can make another adjustment of roughly a hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars to the total budget as a deduct without affecting any program. We're seeing a fifteen percent workers' compensation insurance increase. Pension contributions are up as a result of just pension costs, and our discount rate or our interest rate has to go down to match the Government Accounting Standing Board's criteria. Increase of two percent with step movement for all unions with contracts. We have two unions that don't have contracts that expire this year. There's no budgeted raise for those employees at this point, but those contracts that are active after June thirtieth, they all have a two percent with step. Non-union and part-time, two percent increase, two-point-five percent increase, excuse me. The electricity, there's a change in the delivery charges for municipalities. Our actual cost per kilowatt is fixed, but the delivery charges are going up, and for all-town buildings, it's costing about sixty-seven-thousand dollars more. In terms of revenues, municipal aid and the other revenues are basically the same. Maybe a slight increase in some, but overall relatively unchanged, which is good, because it didn't go down. But we still would expect between now and the time budget adopted, with the legislature still working, there may be changes on the revenue side and things become more clearer on municipal aid. And that's briefly what it is. Again, at the public hearing, there'll be a more in-depth presentation, but this was a quick, quick one. Be happy to answer any questions.
Jeff, one thing, on the, on the OPEB trust contribution, I thought we were doubling every year, so not two-four-six, but two-four-eight, one-point-six.
Not two-four-six.
It was? Okay.
We can do two-four-eight, but I think two-four-six, we agreed on, would be...
Yeah, I just didn't remember what we, what we did.
Yeah. And we're still projecting, based upon last year's activity in the active fund, we can move about a million dollars from the active fund to the OPEB fund. So by the end of this year, we'll probably have close to eight-and-a-half, nine-million dollars in OPEB, which is pretty good. Nowhere near funded, fully funded, but it's a huge step from where we were three or four years ago.
Thanks.
Thank you. Also, this evening, and I'll have Mike introduce our other guest to talk about ABGEO and our GIS enhancements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. It's our pleasure tonight to introduce Ms. Kristen Labrie. She is with the firm of Applied Geographics here in East Hartford, and she is overseeing the town's GIS application. Obviously, the town's been working on a GIS system for several years now, and we have a system now in place that's available, that Kristen will describe to you, and its availability to you and to the general public, as well as the town employees. So, without any further ado, Kristen. You can use this one, or you can use...
I'll just use this one. I'm pretty loud, so you probably won't need one anyway. Turn that thing down. First of all, I wanna say thank you to the Town Council, citizens of the town, for inviting me to come and speak to you. As a UConn alumnus, I'm going to make this as brief as humanly possible. Go Huskies! So that you can all get out of here. But I do wanna take the time to just introduce you to your new MAPGEO website. My name is Kristen Labrie. I'm a project manager at Applied Geographics, and I've overseen the creation of the site. And the town should be very proud of this site. It's got a lot of information. I can't go through everything tonight, so I just want to hit the high points of it. I brought in some handouts that you can take notes on or give you a basic idea of the functionality of the site. So the first thing on that sheet is the site URL. You could just put it right into your browser, go to the site. Sites work best on more modern browsers. If you, I believe there's a link now on the town webpage to the site also. And the MAPGEO was designed as a hosted municipal mapping solution. You'll see that there are ways to take a look at the town's cadastral data and also some of the additional data that's available for the town. MAPGEO is cloud-based, meaning that the data aren't hosted on a physical location in our office or in the town's office, but on a cloud server. There's no plug-in required. There's nothing that you have to download to be able to access the site. We improve it continuously behind the scenes, and it's configurable. Each MAPGEO site for each client town will look basically the same, but there are different things that we can change depending on what the town requires. The next thing is that it uses tiled maps. When you see a site like this and you go and move it, you might see little squares. Each of those images is a static tile image. That allows the site to load very quickly. Instead of having to draw roads, draw buildings, draw parcels, each of those images loads very quickly. So you'll notice that about the site also. I want to just take you on a tour of the site here. Can I just have a chair, so I don't kneel down? Because I'll kneel down. Thanks. And if you can't hear me, let me know, but that's never happened to me before, so. Thank you. When you pull up the MAPGEO site, this is the interface that you'll see, and there are different tabs which can be closed and dock in the corners. Each of these tabs will help you do a different task. Under the first tab, Maps, you can take a look at, I'm gonna zoom in here a little bit, just so it's a little bit easier to see. As you zoom in, more data becomes available. You can look at the town's cadastral information as a base map, or you can drop down and look at it as an aerial photo. You can also add any one of the thematic overlays, if you'd like to look at the town zoning. Click that. And you can use these sliders to make a layer more or less transparent. Can drop down this and take a look at the legend. With the MAPGEO, you can also create a printable map as a PDF document. Give it a title. There's a couple of different sizes and layouts that you can use. You can also print a map at a particular scale if you need to do that. If you click on the link, you can copy this link and paste it into a document, and when you reopen that link from this link address, it'll open exactly where it's showing on the screen. You can click either of these and go to Google Street View or Bing Bird's Eye of the site that you're looking for. Probably the most common thing you'll use this for is to search for properties. I had planned to search for oak, because every town has an oak. You can search by address. You can search by name of the homeowner. You can also search by a property ID. And the search for ABGEO, from ABGEO, is very Google-like, inasmuch as it will search for anything with the word oak in it, whether it's a name, whether it's an address, a street, an owner. In this case, we can show all on the map, or we can choose one address by clicking on it. The map will zoom to that address, and a little box will pop up to give you property information for that property. If you look here, you can see that there's additional information, and this is being pulled straight from the town's KAMA or Assessor's database. You can see the property valuation, the zone, and if you needed additional information, you can click on the property record card, and that will open up a hosted PDF of the One of the other functions of the MAPGEO is to create an abutters list. If you click on the abutters tab, it will automatically default to a three-hundred-foot radius. You can adjust that radius to anything up to a thousand feet. And at this point, you'll see the properties that abut that selected property in blue with the actual radius in sort of a hazy blue around it. Each of those properties is listed here. You can remove any of them. You can also create a spreadsheet or mailing labels. The spreadsheet is an Excel spreadsheet. Under the Town of Weathersfield tab, you have the site contact for any issues or concerns or questions that might come up about the site, and the disclaimer, which also includes information about when the parcels were last updated, and that means the shape of the parcels. It includes information about when the property data was last updated. The town has an uploader, which uploads changes from the town's KAMA every single night. So if there's a new owner on Tuesday and it's entered into the KAMA system, on Wednesday, that property should show up as having the new owner in the MAPGEO. There's a place to put comments if someone has a question about the site, and our Help section, which, if you're having a problem, you can check in the Help section. There are PDFs that will open for each of the different tabs. You can also access any of the Help PDFs by clicking on this... You can also access any of the Help PDFs by clicking on this question mark. The final thing I want to show you is the markup tools. When you zoom in, you can see dimensions, you can see buildings, pools, trees, driveways. And you can also use the MapGeo to calculate areas. You just click on a parcel to select it. I did that inadvertently. But if you right-click, you'll get a set of tools that you can use to make the map your own. You just click. In this case, I'm just tapping. And I can calculate the size of those two parcels. Shows acres, square feet, square meters. Double-click to finish it. Right-click to go back to pan, or right-click to erase everything. And if you want to print a map with those markup tools on it, those...or not the tools, but whatever you mark up, that will stay on any printable map that you create. However, when you close your browser, those markups will not stay for your next browsing All right, I think I've covered everything on my little list. Does anybody have any questions? I've put my contact information on the bottom of the sheet. If anyone has any questions, I'm more than happy to answer them. Just email me, or give me a call.
Just give me the website one more time.
Okay. The website is www.mapgeo.com/WeathersfieldCT. And there should be enough...
Utility data, is that on here?
Right now, the only data layers that are accessible to the public are the ones that you see here. There are additional data layers that are available behind the login. The login is also for suppressed accounts. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Once again, go Huskies!
I would ask that you remove the minutes for the 17th. I realized today they hadn't been uploaded to the cloud.
So, they're not in there, you're saying?
They weren't in your bundle when you took that from the cloud.
Table that when we get to it. Thank you. Let's move on to Council Action.
I'm sorry, Mike. I was just...I couldn't hear what you were saying about the minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They were not on...
They were not sent out. They were not put on the cloud with the packet.
Are they anywhere on the town website at all? I saw the one with the motions.
The motions are on the website. We don't usually put the full minutes up until they've been approved. I can send them to you tomorrow.
Okay, so we won't be approving them tonight?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Council Action. 1A, Acceptance of Resignations. Deputy Mayor?
Motion to accept the resignation from the Central Connecticut Health District, Teresa Urbansky, terms 3-3, 2014 to 6-30, 2016.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Donna?
Is it?
Do you want?
Wait a minute. Sorry.
That's all right.
Resignation from Boards and Commissions for Inland Wetlands, Robert Cobb, 99 Meadowview Road, from 7/111 to 6/30, 2014. From the Youth Advisory Board, George Brashiroff, from 120 Mohawk Lane, 117, 2012 to 6/30, 2014.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstention? Deputy Mayor, Appointments to Boards and Commissions, 1B.
Motion to appoint to the Human Rights and Relations Commission, Maria Alfonso, 256 Brimfield Road, term 4/7/14 to 6/30/2017. To the Weathersfield Advisory Committee for People with Disabilities, Jocelyn Valenti of 50 Old Common, term 4/7/2014 to 6/30/2014. To the Youth Advisory Board, Maria Alfonso, 256 Brimfield Road, too. Term was 4/7/14 to 6/30/2014. To the OPEB, as the OPEB Resident Trustee, three-year term, Joseph Massaro, 155 Clearfield Road, 4/7/14 to 6/30/2017.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have no unfinished business. We'll move to 3A, Resolution, granting authorization for the town manager. Do I have a motion?
Move to allow the Chief Executive Officer/Town Manager to sign the application for financial assistance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, ask Mike Turner, our Emergency Manager Director, to review this item.
Good evening, councilors. This application is actually for a pass-through grant. As CROG receives federal funding, or the town receives federal funding, there has been agreement over the past, let's say roughly 10 years or so, where we essentially assign these monies to CROG to oversee them as a regional basis. So this will allow the town manager to enter into those agreements. Those grants typically provide training for our police officers, our firefighters, equipment based on a regional basis, that the region needs, things like that. It's not our...there are different grants that we apply for, for individual town projects and town equipment.
Any questions or discussion for Mike? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Motion moves on. Moving to 3B, A Resolution Endorsing the Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Performance Incentive Program. Do I have a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve the resolution endorsing the Regional Performance Incentive Program Grants.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, CROG is putting together a series of regional grants to help with certain somewhat administrative, but regional things like data backup, human resource, information pooling, those kind of things. So the two we would participate in is, again, the disaster recovery backup-type storage, information storage systems, and a human resource clearinghouse, which is a combination of policies, procedures, job descriptions. And if we evolve into that, you know, a collection of, you know, members who went to arbitration on certain points or whatever, kind of a storing house of information.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions for Town Manager on that? Jeff, how long do you anticipate that program will take to bud? Any ideas or specifics?
Probably more than a year. Yeah, we're still in the applying for the grant phase, and then, once it's done, you know, designing the program.
Thank you. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to 3C, Suspense List for Uncollectible Taxes. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to transfer the uncollected taxes to tax suspense status in accordance with Section 12-165 of the Connecticut General Statutes and the attached list.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, Tax Collector Marlene Desergens is here this evening to review this with you. This is an annual item per statute, taxes that are unpaid after 15 years or moved to suspense, which means that they're...it's not that they can't be collected, but we just don't pursue them at that time. And I'll ask Marlene to come up.
Good evening.
Hi, Marlene.
The accounts that are currently on the suspense list are all individuals that are deceased. We've tried every effort that we could to collect them. There was nothing left in the estates.
And how much is the total amount, 40...
It was $4,402.28.
Thank you. Any questions from Marlene on this?
Just a quick question. It looks like, are they mostly motor vehicles?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yep.
Okay. If it's an actual property, what, you end up leaving it, or whatever?
Yeah, yeah. Real estate, we never suspend.
Okay. Just...okay, gotcha.
Other questions, concerns? Thank you, Marlene. We have a motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Thank you. Moving on to 3D, Transfer. Do I have a motion on the transfer?
Move to approve the transfer of $100,000 from the Contingency Fund to the Street Improvement Fund for additional street repairs.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. As you know, the winter took a toll on our streets. The usual amount of money we keep in the Street Improvement Fund per year for pothole repair and patching is about $50,000. It's easy to say that that's going to be expended, or actually, it has been. So we're recommending or requesting that $100,000 be moved from the contingency fund to the Street Improvement Fund. If this was a general fund item, we could run it in the general fund, but since the Street Improvement Fund is a standalone fund, rather than run that in the negative, we're asking to move money into it to keep it on the plus side. We have full expectation that the end of the year, the Physical Services Division will be over budget due to snow and ice removal. So this will be one of a few transfers you'll see regarding physical services and their operations.
Questions for Town Manager? Jeff?
Yeah. So, the money that's spent, is that basically to provide, you know, whatever, tar or whatever to town employ, so they would fix, or does this go to a contractor?
This is normally...this is usually for town crews to fix town streets.
Okay.
It may be used to rent a paving box for some of the bigger areas that need to be corrected. But most of it's just for blacktop.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. And so, so we're just buying more?
Just buying more.
More, okay. Just, I mentioned this several months ago, but, and that was because I had a complaint from a town resident who fell on his bicycle going down the downhill side of Knott Street, coming down on the east of Ridge. It's very rough there. So, before we have any more of our residents wipe out, I would hope that maybe some of this $100,000 could be used on that stretch. I know it's not going to fix it for good, but it's among our major streets. That's one of the worst stretches.
There's a tree right there, and I don't know if the tree does something with the wet, and it keeps it wet. I don't know.
I think it's just before you get to, like, Amherst.
Yeah, it's right on there.
It's really...and for some reason, it's the downhill side, not the uphill side, that's worse. So if you could address that. And I just have one other question, and this has nothing to do with what we're looking at, but it does have to do with roads. You know, the state did Prospect last year, and I think it held up quite well in the winter. Do we know if Wells is anywhere?
This summer.
This summer, really?
Summer, from coast to coast.
From Newington all the way to Silas Dean, basically?
Yeah.
Do we know the timing of it, just for residents to...
The state is actually doing repair work right now, starting to prep for catch basins and things like that. You've probably seen them out, you know, especially near the Woke Hill Road.
Okay. So is it a spring thing, Mike, do you think, or a summer?
It's part of their vendor-in-place process, so they need to wait for the same contract that we do to be awarded, so that they can do that.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you.
One question, Paul.
Yep.
Is there any money left in contingency?
Yes. Well, we anticipate we'll spend it all for the snow and ice, depending on where Physical Services operation ends up.
How much is left before this transfer?
340. We haven't touched it.
Okay.
So there'll be 240, but we anticipate that Physical Services will have spent more than that. And there's other line items in the budget that are under...will be underspent that will move to take care of those things.
Councilman Newses, you have a question?
No, that was the same. Questions? Thanks.
Thoughts, questions? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Moving to 3E, Motion for Small Cities Loan Subordination for Forest Drive. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the Small Cities Loan Subordination for 219 Forest Drive, Weathersfield.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This, again, we have someone who got a small cities housing rehab loan, and they want to do some refinancing. Town Attorney Bradley has prepared the necessary subordination for that to take place with the property owners' bank. There's plenty of equity in the House and with the loans, so we're recommending that that be approved.
Thank you very much. Any questions about that? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second for subordination. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Finally, 3F, Approval and Agreement with Blum Shapiro.
Motion to accept the proposal from Blum Shapiro for the 2013-2014 audit.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Blum Shapiro, who does the town audit every year, well, does a town audit yearly, is...we're proposing to renew their contract for one year next year for a price of $39,300. It's up about $800 from the current year. I think the Budget and Finance Committee met with them recently on the audit, and my understanding was a satisfactory conversation, being that, you know, there's been no fallout for that.
I know. Yeah, so like, maybe I could go in, because, you know, essentially, one of the things is that the auditors for the town really work for the council, not for the finance director, not for the town manager, not for the school superintendent. So they're basically our sort of watchdog on town government. And I think there was some concern, you know, prior to this past year, that maybe the watchdog needed to be a little bit, you know, a little bit tougher, with more eyes and so forth. And we did agree last year to go another year with Blum Shapiro. There was a changeover in the lead partner on our account. Councilor Hurley is not here, but the...he and the other three members of the Budget Committee met with them without the town officials in the room. They, I thought, gave us a very objective, very deep view of both the town finances as well as the Board of Ed finances. They had a number of recommendations, which I believe the town is in the process of implementing. So I think they did a good job and a more thorough job, at least that I've seen over the last several years. So I would recommend that we go with them for another year. And the other thing is, of course, we just added a new finance director, and given the fact that we have...that Mike just started, I think it would be a bit disruptive if we had a new auditor come in at the same time, especially if there really wasn't a major justification.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions from councilors on that? Donna?
When was the last time we went out to bid?
Last...the previous year.
Previous year.
Yep.
Any thoughts or questions? Jeff, thank you for the summary on that. I know you worked with the Finance Committee on it. I think I was comfortable with that outcome. We have a motion and a second in front of us. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We're going to move on to 4A, Bids. The first bid for diesel fuel. Do I have a motion?
Move to award the CROG bid number 608 to East River Energy for Diesel and Heating Oil.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. CROG bid out diesel, fuel, and heating oil. Based upon the results, the actual cost is going down a couple pennies a gallon. Staff's recommending taking CROG... Staffs recommending taking CROG, a little bit of East River Energy for diesel fuel and heating oil for next year. And these prices are reflective in the budget proposed.
Great. Any questions on this agenda?
One quick question. Jeff, just a quick question. When you said it's in the budget, is it... Is this reflected as far as we know in the school budget too, or just your side?
We would have to check. We told them the pricing.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be a good question to ask them at the joint meeting.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions? We have a discussion. We have a motion and a second in front of us with respect to the diesel fuel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Motion moves. 4B. Awarding a bid for camera security system for town hall and library.
Move to approve the bid of advanced alarms for $26,847.
Second.
Thank you. I'm sure, Mike, you're here for that, I'm sure, right?
Yes, this is a capital budget item. We have budgeted $40,000 for this piece of work. And what it is, is to install closed circuit TV cameras here at this building, basically around the exterior of the building to cover the entrances and the parking lot area. It's not something that will be monitored full-time by a staff person. It will essentially go into like a DVR recorder down in the basement. It will be accessible should there be a problem, you know, via police, you know, through our fiber optic or something like that. We can tap into it so someone can view, you know, the cameras live if they, you know, if we chose to do that. But essentially, it's for a loss prevention side, accidents in the parking lot, slip and falls. We've had, you know, several, two or three over the past couple of years that, you know, I'm sure the losses would be more than paid for by, you know, having some documentation of actually what happened, so.
And this came in under the budget of $40,000?
This came in under our $40,000 budget, yes.
Questions for Mike?
Real quick. If it did come under budget of the $40,000, would there be any consideration to put similar video cameras at other town buildings? I know the Cove Warehouse was just recently broken into. Would that be something we would consider?
We... Well, yeah. This particular project is... Was budgeted for this particular building. We would have to go back, you know, and reprogram those dollars because it would be... Essentially be a standalone system. This will have its own server and its own, you know, recorder and what have you, all wired in, so.
Jimmy, how long are these? Is the tape kept? Does it recycle after?
Thirty days. Thirty days. It records for 30 days and then recycles itself. They're essentially motion-activated cameras. In other words, it's not continuously recording for 30 days. If you walk in front of the camera, it will turn the camera on, record the activity, and then turn off.
I should know this off the top of my head, but how long do you have to give notice to the town after an incident if you slip and fall? Is it...
I've seen them come in months, months later.
Sixty to ninety days?
Yeah. Usually, we'll know right away, though. I mean, if, you know, if someone files an accident report or an ambulance shows up in the building, you know, we'll know enough to, you know, take and capture that record.
Okay.
Is that the only reason why we're trying to install this, just to reduce our costs for slip and falls?
No.
No. This will and can, you know, serve, should the town desire this for, you know, a security system itself.
So, are there any other issues that we're seeing in town hall, like people breaking in, or...
Well, the building, and I don't know if we talked about this, you know, but the building is generally unsecured at night because it's open to meetings and those kind of things. So, having some recording of who's coming and going is probably a pretty positive thing for us.
Okay. Yeah, just a question. Yeah, so, go ahead.
Would you like us to get a price on the warehouse? What would it cost or something like that?
I think what Mike kind of referred to is, is it more important to put it here or maybe elsewhere? I don't want to put words in your mouth, but... Right. That would be... I mean, not just the warehouse, but other town... Nature Center broken into. Nature Center. Physical Services, I know, you know, there's...
Physical Services, we have this system.
Okay.
So, we can take a look at some other buildings?
Great. Thank you.
This came up through CIP, correct, Mike?
Correct. This went through the whole CIAC process.
Good. Okay. We have a motion and a second in front of us with regard to appropriation for the security system. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? Thank you, Mike. It's a bid for asphalt. Do I have a motion?
Motion to award up to $100,000 of paving work to Tilcon based upon their 2014 state VIP bid.
Second.
Welcome back, Mike.
I didn't leave. Every year, we've piggybacked our... Both our milling and our paving bids off of the state bids. In this case here, the state VIP, which is not VIP, it's vendor in place, we tag off of that for our particular district, for the paving costs. That contract has not yet been awarded, but Tilcon did agree to hold the prices that they bid in anticipation that it would be awarded. The product, because of the variability in the bids and the unit prices, there are several... There are two vendors that bid in our region, Galazzo and Tilcon. Tilcon has actually held the contract with the town for the 18 years that I've been here. They've been the low vendor. So, that's our recommendation, is to stick with Tilcon on this particular bid. What this does is, this bid will get us through the spring paving that is scheduled, and then we will come back to you again this summer, once all the bids are awarded for, you know, the fall paving program.
Questions for Mike on this?
Mike? All right. Stop, yeah, I keep cutting you off. Just real quick, the spring, the batching plants, have they started up? I know they kind of take a hiatus in the winter time.
They're just... They're just starting to open right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we should start to see some, obviously, the pothole patching soon?
Yes, we've been using cold mix up until this point.
Okay.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And that was part of the question, but this is within our road paving budget?
Yes. This comes out of the $1.2 million road levy account.
First section of...
Thanks.
Seeing no other comments, we have a motion and a second in front of us for reward of the bid. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed, abstentions? And finally, 4D is rejection of bid for the elevator at Weathersfield High. Can a motion, please?
Motion to reject the elevator bids for the Weathersfield High School renovation project?
Second.
Mike, you're still on.
Hello. Earlier this evening, our building committee voted unanimously to reject the elevator bids and recommend that you reject the bids and authorize a rebid. If you recall, we had originally rejected the elevator bids once because we only had one vendor respond originally when we went out to bid with all the projects. One vendor responded, that was Otis, and they missed half of the scope of work, okay? So, we rejected those bids. We went back out to bid this time, and we received two bids, Bay State Elevator and Otis Elevator, again. In the interview and vetting process of those vendors, we discovered discrepancies that the low vendor was approximately about two-thirds of our budget, came in substantially lower than our budget. But he had proposed an elevator that was not the specified elevator, okay? So, he went outside the bid scope, bid on something that he felt was appropriate, and came in two-thirds, and would have been the low bidder. If we went with Otis, we would be just slightly above our budget. But in talking with both of these vendors, they offer a new technology elevator, which essentially negates the need for an elevator machine room next to it, okay? All of the controls and machinery are housed right within the door frame, essentially, of the elevator itself. Both of these vendors offer this as an option. It would be budgeted slightly higher than the low bidder that we received, but will save an awful lot of real estate and additional supplemental work by other trades. So, based on that fact, it was the recommendation of our construction manager and endorsed by our building committee to reject the bids and let us go back out to bid one additional time with this newer technology and solicit bids. Hopefully, we'll get, you know, two competitive bids, and we'll save a substantial amount of money.
Questions for Mike on that? Jeff?
So, my question is, this is a comparison between an electric traction and hydraulic?
Yes.
Right? So, how new of a technology is this hydraulic? I didn't think that was very new.
Well, hydraulic is... Has been around. I mean, you know, but this is called a holeless hydraulic elevator. Old hydraulic elevators, you have to drill a shaft down into the ground, 20, 30 feet deep, to have a piston down in the ground that would go back and forth. These new systems are essentially housed from ground level up. They're kind of like the hydraulics on a backhoe, so to speak, okay? And because they're limited, in other words, we couldn't do this on a 50-story building. But because our building, the maximum height is really, it's a five-stop elevator, but it's really only going up three stories. It's within the limits that this will work.
So, is this something that our architect and project manager didn't know was a product out there?
Well, the combination of the controls without the machine room less and hydraulic is very new. The first elevator that got approval of this was just built or just applied for in February.
Okay. Thank you.
And this will not cost us any additional design or architect time to put this back out.
No, it seems like substantial savings, so...
Yeah.
Makes sense. Thanks, Mike.
Any other thoughts or questions? Thank you, Mike. We have a motion and a second before us on the approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed or abstentions? Thanks again, Mike. I know we don't have the minutes for approval, so we'll move into public comment. Public comment? Anyone wishing to speak? Gus?
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue, again. Good evening. I just saw the budget, and something just struck me that the union people are asking 2% increase and non-union, 2 and 1/2. I am a government worker too now. I'm retired, I guess, you know, and I consider myself a government-employed guy. And I got just 1 and 1/2% increase last year, you know? The union gets 2%. It's 30% more than me. And the non-union, it's about 70% more increase. I think that's something to think about it, percentage-wise. I heard that basically, we always piggyback the state. I've been involved with a lot of projects, and every time the state or the government puts out work, for some reason, it always work... It's a cost more, 20, 30% more. And the question that I have, do we have to piggyback them, or can we deal with anybody and say, "Listen, can we do the same work with a little bit less"? I mean, why piggyback? If they are overpriced, we have to pay overprice too. I don't know. I just... I'm questioning that. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Mr. Young?
Robert Young, 20 Copper Mill Road. And I almost contacted the manager, asking him where his budget was, because I couldn't remember if it had come out already, but I guess this is the first night, correct?
Correct.
And I know I've spoke about this issue more than once in front of this council, as well as the Board of Education. There's several ways of doing a budget. And one way is spend everything, or do a budget where you're trying to economize and save something. This particular budget doesn't shoot for saving anything. This budget is designed to spend everything. We look at the Board of Education, they front-load all those salary accounts that they have, and then as the year goes on, they end up transferring money from those accounts down to accounts that they've already expended all their budget, and they put in more money in those accounts. So, they spend it all. Town does the same thing. What you need to do, and I've talked about this, you take the actuals that you've already spent from July 1 until now, and then you figure out, you extrapolate, you reforecast, whatever the word might be, to the end of the year, June 30, to come up with what your actuals were and what you're projecting. What you're using here is what's called the adopted. You adopted that almost a year ago, these numbers. Right now, you have the most latest and greatest information on your... To get the foundation for your budget to go forward. You've got approximately nine months' worth of salaries, electric bills, oil bills, all kinds of bills. You have approximately nine months' worth of that. And you should be having that in one column and next to it, calculate what you need to get to the end of the year, without going over budget, and having a bundle of money at the end of the year, reducing our taxes, like Mr. Colantonio was talking about. We need to find ways of doing that. And there is... There are ways. It takes will to do it. And I haven't seen the will over all these years that I've been attending these meetings. How do you think companies survive? They find ways to save money, and they don't transfer the money if they have some line item further down on their financial statement, and they've already met that budget, they're not going to put more money in there. They're going to keep it and give it to the stockholders. In this case, you're giving it back to us by reducing our taxes because you have money left over. Year after year, we see the Board of Education taking money from those salaried accounts, there's about six or seven of them up there, and the benefits, and pushing the money down to budget to other line items that have already met their budget, and they end up spending more for some other monies. They buy more things, and they end up giving you back $200 and saying, "Oh, we had $200 left over." They could have come back with thousands and maybe hundreds of thousands of dollars, or maybe a million. It was a couple of years ago, four or five years ago, they came back with a million. But things have changed. It's greed, greed, greed. We need to spend everything possible, and when it comes time for budget, we front-load. We front-load all of those accounts to such a point that the taxpayer gets hammered, and this happens year after year. I have yet to see this council stand up and make a good budget. I can hear you talk about it, but that's in your minds, that you have a good budget. I sit out here and I say, "You put no effort into doing it, and it wouldn't take much effort to bring in the budget down and making it realistic." Look what you've got tonight that I spoke about regarding this lease with the Standish House. You gave them a fifty-year lease for a hundred dollars a year. And if this property sits there as a restaurant, doesn't become a restaurant for six months, you're going to cash them out at nineteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Who in the world would ever do such a thing as a business? Only Weathersfield would do that. It's a shame what you people do, and agreed to. And again, I talked earlier about the strengths coming in on negotiating a contract. We had no strength. We gave them more, because they were our friends, they were our buddies, and we love them. That's why you did it. And the rest of us, hey, we're looking at, what, half a million dollars for exterior work on the building, and where's that money coming from? It's not coming from the Historic Society. And I don't have any problem if you gave it to the Historic Society, but let them do all the upkeep on that building. That's the way it should have gone. Now, you gave them a plum. You gave them a plum, forty-one thousand dollars a year. And what do they make at the Kenny Center? What do they make at the old academy? What do they make wherever else they, whatever other properties they own, they have that belongs to the Town of Weathersfield, where we're paying and ponying up? I hope, the manager, I did ask him for their copies of those leases for those other properties as well, because I think I should, I want to read them, and I think the newspaper people want to read them, because then they can understand what I'm talking about. But if we continue doing this, and we upfront companies, and we upfront organizations in town, that are not Town of Weathersfield, we upfront them money. We have no business doing that. Only you folks do it. And you put the rest of us on the line. Terrible. Thank you very much, Mayor. I hope you'll think about the budget. You've got nine months' worth of actuals, three months' worth of projected, that's what should be in that adopted column. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, most folks, I think, were aware that Counselor Rel's dad passed away just a short time ago. And I mentioned to Mike that I didn't have the honor of meeting him at any point, but most of us that read a little bit about him, I'm sure, recognized not only his service to our country, but his leadership and contributions while Mike's mom and his wife were governor of the state. And I thought we could take a moment for a little moment of recognition and silence on behalf of Mike, his family, his extended family.
Thank you. Entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck, UConn.
Eight AM, eight AM Saturday. Fireside.